Thank you very much. Okay, did everyone please rise? Go play the little pieces.
I believe in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of its own accord.
Please make any further comments. Thank you, please be seated. Now the chair is ready to lay open. By the sound of the law.
Alderman Becker?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Alderman Will?
Here.
Alderman Dawson?
Alderman Carey?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Mel?
Here.
Alderman Shadet?
Here.
Alderman Brown?
Here.
We have a motion, spent with the minutes of the previous meeting and group saying that prepared.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
On my side.
Close. Senators are adopted, nine zero. Second motion is spent with the meeting of the general bills.
Motion, second.
Second. All in favor?
On my side.
Close. Move on to the public speaking portion of the meeting this evening. House, the Senate. Okay, just for your information, the council sets aside a thirty minute allotment time for this purpose. And please give your name and address at the podium for the record and address all your comments. You may be council chair for the ultimate, not allowed to engage in debate. Thank you very much. First speaker, please.
Adam Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. I'm Adam Sawyer, 184 Albany Avenue. I am a local physician and business owner. My wife and I have multiple properties in the community. And I am proposing putting a shooting range at my ninety Prince Street office. It is a building now that is still in use, still in, I have my practice there still. But I'm proposing to create a business in the building which would promote a resource for thousands of Ulster County residents and likely hundreds of Kingston residents. It's going to provide an economic boost for the local midtown community. It will create a large sales tax revenue for the city. The business will bring about a thousand extra people to the city per month that normally would not come here for any other reason. It's a safe and highly regulated industry. It's got multiple state and federal agencies that oversee its operation. Safety, noise, and environmental pollution are the biggest concerns with this type of project. Again, all highly regulated and all would be abated under my plan and my project. This topic has become somewhat controversial and it's been in the paper frequently. There've been a lot of comments. I would like to say that there is certainly an outspoken minority of people who are against this project. And I believe it's from lack of education on the understanding of the industry and the project itself. But also, a lot of the arguments really have no statistical basis. And I think that's important to understand. There, it is a safe, again, highly regulated industry. And there is no factual basis for a lot of the concerns that have been raised. This project's going to provide about ten jobs. About half would be full-time jobs, the rest would be likely part-time. That may change. There may be more. There certainly could be less. There'll be a higher than prevailing wage provided. And it's going to support a community of people that already exist. We're not bringing, we're not going to create a community that doesn't exist here. It already is here. These are your friends and your neighbors. And I just wanted to introduce myself and just make you aware of the project. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Harold Grunewald.
It looks a lot harder than it looks. Yeah. My name is Harold Grunewald. I live at twenty-three Coffee Place in the city of Kingston. Speaking in support of the shooting range. And any changes in legislation that need to take place to help support it, if that is necessary. It's a business. It's a business in midtown. How can you object to that? I've heard a number of people go, well, it's close to the Y, it's close to the high school. So what? It's not like they're going to be shooting in either one of those places. The lanes are going in another direction and no bullets are going to escape that building. The people that this business is going to cater to are people who are already licensed by the state. You need that license or you're not on a pistol. So they're licensed, they might do some business. There are some people that may come in to use the range that live outside the city. This is a bad thing. We have people coming into the city to spend their money. Spend an hour or two at the range, go out to dinner, pick up something for the wife, whatever. But it means more business for us here in midtown and all the benefits. How many of the people that are against this project are willing to sink a half million of their own money into an entrepreneurial project? They don't think it is. Most of the downsides that have been talked about here aren't just silly. There's been an indoor range in the city of Troy for years and years and years. I first went there, I think, in seventy-seven. And it's one of the safest areas of the city. Unbeknownst, what you don't see in movies and TV shows is gun stores don't generally get broken into, ranges don't get broken into. They're safe areas. Why? You have a whole bunch of legal people who are able to carry weapons in the area. Criminals don't go there. So I ask the council to consider carefully what's going on and not to do a knee-jerk reaction of a few people who really don't know what the statistics are, don't know what the realities are. Because this is one of the best things that could happen to midtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Bonnie Landy. I live at twenty-one Austin Street in Kingston, New York. I want to thank you for the opportunity tonight to present to you and the public Youth Build, Ulster Youth Build, which has been operating in Ulster County for twenty-plus years. I think some of you may not be aware of what Youth Build has accomplished in the city of Kingston. We presented to you tonight a booklet which will give you an overview, it's a pictorial overview, of what we've accomplished in our partnership with the city over the past twenty years. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you staff members of the Youth Build program as well as some of our members who have come here tonight to help with this presentation so that you're more aware of what Youth Build is all about. Jody Hopkins, our day-to-day program operations manager. John Mayer, our Youth Build construction site coordinator. And you should know that John is also a graduate of Youth Build, a graduate of Youth Build program in nineteen ninety-eight. And he has his own very successful construction company, but has now come back to Youth Build to help us continue on with the things that we've been doing in the community. The managers that are here, some of them, not all, some of them are here with us tonight. Justin Crum, John Marshall, Angel Lacy, Dustin Bundy, and Austin Bailey. Our program is a very disciplined, structured program. And I would like to just demonstrate for you all what we start every day with in our program. Every single day, this is how we start our program. The staff would come up and... We have a vision for the program which is recited by the staff. Only three of us are here, we have four other staff members. But we start the day, every day, this way. In a safe, healthy, and supportive environment, Ulster Youth Build provides a chance for young people in the community to set higher standards for themselves through camaraderie, goal-setting, self-esteem, and trust. By transforming attitudes as they rebuild their neighborhoods, Youth Build members will create the cornerstone of opportunity for better living and become leaders of the future.
We, and the members of Ulster Youth Build pledge to be positive role models and strong leaders to become respected citizens in our community and raise the level of consciousness of elders. We pledge to focus on our educational goals and enhance our opportunity given to us to work together as a team to rebuild the neighborhood. This will do with appreciation, pride, determination, and commitment. Youth Build!
Thank you. I would also like to introduce to you Heidi Kirchner, the president and CEO of the YMCA, which is our lead agent, and Jared Brown, who's our board member, an Ulster trustee board member. Every day, we start the day with that vision and the pledge. And we keep that reminder on the surface so that everyone knows in the program what Youth Build is all about. It's an education program. We have mostly out-of-school youth. They return back to a structured education program. They get on-the-job skills training with our housing construction training program, leadership development, life skills, full-time counseling, and any other kind of support system that they might need in order to be successful to have the direction of their lives changed. It's an exceptionally good program. It's a national program. There are two hundred and seventy-three Youth Build programs throughout the United States in forty-four states. It's overseen by Youth Build USA, our national office, which is out of Boston. And all of these programs follow the same model, the model of reconstruction of housing as well as reconstruction of lives. We're very proud of what we've been able to accomplish in the city with our partnership with the city. We've done twenty-two houses, eighteen, I believe, in the city, four of them with Habitat for Humanity in the city, one in Arrowville and one in the town of Ulster. We're here tonight to ask for your support of resolution number ninety-nine to pass the ownership of twelve Susan Street to the Youth Build program in the YMCA so that we can again return another house. It's off your tax rolls, back on your tax rolls. Every one of the houses that we've completed in the city of Kingston are still occupied by the first-time homebuyers that bought the houses. And they've been on the tax rolls since we finished those houses. So appreciate your support of that resolution and thank you for the privilege of speaking tonight.
I think it's really Reese who wants to speak next. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the common council, my community here this evening. And sitting with me is the CEO, Adam Saunders, from the Ulster County SPCA and his dog, Reese. I'm here this evening as a community activist all my life in my community, born and raised here. And I want to speak to the third resolution, number sixty-five, of the modification of the two thousand and sixteen police department budget, which I, it should really read, it has to do with the animal control being taken over in a contract by the Ulster County SPCA. I had the privilege to attend Mr. Coop's meeting a few weeks ago. And we had the opportunity to speak on behalf of animal control being taken over by the Ulster County SPCA. Formerly, we had a door warden in the city of Kingston. I had the privilege for many years when Marie Post was the cat warden and Sean McGary was also the cat warden, believe it in the city. So we've worked many years tirelessly for the animals in our community. And I think this partnering with the Ulster County SPCA speaks volumes. I'm not sure if you all realize that the Ulster County SPCA has been around for a hundred and twenty-five years. I strongly suggest that if you have the opportunity to go to the Facebook page of the Ulster County SPCA, you will be overwhelmed by humanity. And their efforts, they do not have an extraordinary amount of income, as we all know, which is tight. And if you've followed me over the years, I'm a finance director, so I watch the almighty dollar very carefully. And this move is not only on behalf of working and bringing to the animals so that we can offer them this unity, it's also a cost savings to the taxpayers, I can assure you. It is a working educational campus at the Ulster County SPCA. It's an animal kingdom of humility. The number when you call them, there is at least twelve to fifteen extensions of professionals that are available to the public, to you, from dog training down to where they have their own veterinary staff. So I ask all of you this evening to recognize the importance of this resolution. It is making history, quite frankly. And I would hope that our honorable mayor and all of you here heading your own ward, you're responsible, ladies and gentlemen, for the animals in your ward. You're responsible for safety, you're responsible for many items, agendas. But you're also responsible for the animals in your ward. And I would hope that you take that considerably seriously. So again, I offer you the opportunity tonight to recognize the importance of this resolution. Please look to the future as partnering with the Ulster County SPCA. And I thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Michelle Muller.
Hello. Good evening. I'm not a public speaker, so I apologize if I get a little tongue-tired. My name is Michelle Muller. I live at ninety-nine Clinton Avenue. I'm here as a homeowner and a citizen of Kingston to talk about the drug problem in my neighborhood. I bought a home here eight years ago. At that time, there was a significant drug problem in our neighborhood. But because of the relentlessness of myself and my neighbors by calling the police, whenever we saw suspicious activity going on, the drug dealers started to move out of the neighborhood. So things got a little bit better. Now unfortunately, things are getting worse again. This is just a small sample of the heroin baggies that I pick up out of my lawn every Sunday night. I go around with a garbage bag and gloves and pick up these little baggies. We have two houses in our neighborhoods that are blatantly dealing drugs. The police are aware of it, everybody in the neighborhood is aware of it. We have a new bus stop in our neighborhood at the Clinton Avenue United Methodist Church, where they've started a, our food pantry, this is my church, our soup kitchen has started serving breakfast to the children in the morning before they go to school for children who can't get breakfast. So they've created a bus stop there in front of the church. This bus stop is within a half a block of one of the houses that's dealing drugs and within one block of one of the other houses that's dealing drugs. I think this should be treated just like a school zone. The police should really be actively protecting the children in our neighborhood. We have a lot of children in our neighborhood. They walk down that street every day to go to school. They walk by these little baggies, they pick them up, they see the little children playing with them. My neighbors and I have been doing the best that we can. I have one neighbor who is a math professor at Harvard College who volunteers down at the library and teaches a math circle to the children of our neighborhood. I, myself, have gotten a five-thousand-dollar grant to start a community garden in our neighborhood. My neighbors and I actively plant flowers and try to lift up the curbside appeal in our neighborhood. When we go around picking up trash, these baggies, we're doing everything that we can, but we need some help. And I know one of the mottos of Kingston, you know, trying to lift up midtown, is that this is going to be a happy and healthy Kingston for the children of Kingston. And this, what's going on in my neighborhood is neither happy nor healthy for the children. And I would really appreciate it if somebody could help us out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark Porter. Hello. My name is Mark Porter, one sixty-two Smith Avenue. I'm here to voice my support for the proposed shooting range business on Prince Street. The benefits I see are bringing in much-needed new business into midtown, which will also benefit other businesses in the area. I believe if opened, I believe if opened, it would enhance the outside appearance of the building in the area. I see this business as catering to legal, responsible gun owners who not only understand their responsibilities to behave accordingly, but also understand the possible consequences if they don't. It would provide a safe place to enjoy shooting, practicing, and improving competence for seasoned shooters as well as beginners. I see three legs to the business model: gun sales, classroom training, and live practice opportunity. Dr. Sawyer surely understands the responsibilities that come with an FFL license, would not allow anything to jeopardize that or his reputation. Everyone sees the controversy around this proposal and knows that if this business is allowed, there will be many watchful eyes on what happens. I feel that most of the opposition to this business is because of a lack of understanding of the responsibilities and care that legal gun owners and permit holders abide by. So understanding that, I also feel legal, responsible gun owners who would visit would pose no danger to any of the public in the area. I don't see this as people walking around waving guns in plain view or creating dangerous situations for the rest of the public. I would also like to mention that I am a city resident, a midtown resident. My family also visits businesses in the area, the Y, the Midtown Center, and I have kids who attend the high school, walk by this area to and from school, and I still have high hopes for allowing this proposed business to move forward. I feel that it was a very different intention when creating the law of no shooting in Kingston. If this is the only obstacle preventing this from moving forward, I would ask the council to consider amending this law if needed to clarify the intent and allow the project to move forward. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
Ellen DeFalco. Thank you for the opportunity, Council President, Aldermen, members of the press, and public. I'm here once again to remind you that you are all fiscally responsible for our city's finances. How are you protecting our interest? Over four million dollars in taxes have not been collected for four years, and there are over two hundred properties in arrears. Yet, you see fit to circumvent the process and turn a property over to an unknown entity for one dollar. An anonymous group of historic preservation professionals will have to be revealed soon as the steps in forming such an organization must appoint their directors, file formal paperwork, create corporate bylaws, hold their first meeting of the board of directors, issue stock certificates to the shareholders of the corporation, and obtain licenses and permits required for their business. The public is waiting and deserves to know who the principles are. Last night, it was all not known. The city's responsibility is to collect taxes, or at best, develop a payment plan with the owners, not sidestep the collection process entirely. Is this how you meet the needs of the community? And is it legal or even ethical? In my opinion, this current administration lacks open government and transparency. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Adam Saunders.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm the director of the Ulster County SPCA. Obviously, I am here to speak in favor of the resolution regarding the SPCA taking over animal control in the city. I want to first express our excitement at the opportunity to do so. I also want to stress, if there is any concern, this program wouldn't be an experiment. It is designed to be very similar to programs run by Dutchess County SPCA and Columbia Green SPCA, our neighboring counties, that already operate as animal control in their local communities. I believe their years of success doing so bodes well for our ability to take on the task as well. That being said, the SPCA's main goal in all things is to improve the lives of the animals in our community. Kingston is our community. And we believe that our onsite access to medical care, as Jean mentioned, to behavior training, our high visibility to the public for faster adoptions, all contribute to very quickly improving the lives of dogs generated as strays in the city of Kingston. So we're ready to do this, and I hope the members here tonight agree with me. Okay? Thank you.
Kitty McCullough.
Mr. President, members of council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Kitty McCullough, I live at one oh one Beale Street, work there also. I'm one of those anonymous board members of Kingston Preservation Incorporated that plans to save the Nathaniel Booth House that Mr. DeFalco just referred to. Some of you know me as I've helped the city get and carry out more than sixty thousand dollars in certified local government grants over the past couple of years. And I've heard that many of you are in favor of saving the Booth House and making it possible for Kingston Preservation Incorporated to stabilize it and work to get it back on the tax rolls. I think one of the main motivators for most of council, as Ellen alluded to the taxes, is that we would be saving the taxpayer thirty-five thousand dollars for tearing it down. And as I know, because I'm also on the board of the Calvert-Vox Preservation Alliance, where we anticipate replacing the porch of the Hoyt House in Stottsburg, the quarried stone for the porch, just the portico on that house, is going to cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're going to let somebody, some demolition company cart away our stones, our historic stones. I don't want to repeat anything anybody said. We don't plan to operate the house ongoing as any kind of a nonprofit program. We plan to stabilize a unique economic asset and get it into the hands of an owner who will pay its property taxes. Each eighteenth-century building, and its foundation, this building was built in seventeen seventy, the original house, adds immeasurably to Kingston's unique historic character and marketable charm. house, adds immeasurably to Kingston's unique historic character and marketable charm. I'd only like to add that most prosperous communities today are the ones that go after substantive economic development based on what makes them unique. One unique resource for Kingston is that it has extensive historic character, charm, buildings, and streetscapes, many of them tied to major chapters in American history, as is the Booth House. Our economy can get a big jump from these resources by pursuing the real estate, construction, trade, and tourism opportunities they offer. Kingston Preservation Incorporated wants to help make that happen, beginning with the Booth House. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
John Brospolin.
My name is John Brospolin. I live at 16 Corey Street, the city of Kingston here. My family's been in the area for a long, long time. My great-grandfather was a minister at St. James United Methodist Church about 100 years ago. My grandfather built a little stone church across the street. And my family's always been involved in, you know, public service of some form or other, the Boy Scouts, the Kingston Indians, the churches, and so forth. And I myself, I'm on the City of Kingston's Complete Streets Advisory Council. And just one of the little projects I took on was doing the streetlight inventories. And I myself personally have reported 202 streetlight outages in about the past two years. I see this as a public safety issue. It certainly is an issue in our business districts. You know, the uptown parking garage by Fair and Trent Drive, at times, before the half the lights were out there and lights were out on Fair Street and on North Front Street, it was a dark hole. I wouldn't expect anybody to be willing to park there and patronize our businesses uptown. And that's why I jumped in on this, you know, this streetlight project. You know, I'm interested in public safety, community development issues. And for those reasons, I support Dr. Sawyer's efforts to create this shooting range in town. And I look at it from a public safety standpoint. Historically, firearms training was obtained either in the family, in the household, or it was obtained in the military. And people kind of grew up with guns. They, you know, they knew to respect them, they knew how to handle them safely. And over time, and the other thing with that was, generally, it was young males that were introduced to firearms early, early on, you know, maybe even in their pre-teens. But things have changed. Today, people are less inclined to be out hunting with their handguns or guns in general. And they're tending to purchase guns with, you know, protection in mind. And the trends are that a lot more women are buying firearms. A lot of the first-time purchasers are older. They're not in their pre-teens or their early twenties. They're in their thirties, forties, fifties, and some are even in their sixties and seventies. And a facility like this would be really useful in our community, because it would be a welcoming place where new gun owners could go and learn proper, safe gun handling. And there's also opportunities to learn about the laws. And, you know, this is a far better scenario than having people purchase a firearm, they haven't been socialized to it, they took the mandatory, I think it's a three or four-hour course to get their permit, but beyond that, they don't know. And it's not really, you know, going to a sportsman's club isn't necessarily where the 60-year-old woman wants to go learn about guns. It's a different social environment. So for these reasons, I'd like you to support Dr. Sawyer's efforts here. If that requires making changes to the local laws to accommodate this, I encourage you to do that. Thank you for your time.
That's right.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Joseph DeFouf.
Thank you very much, Council President, members of the council. My name is Joseph DeFouf, and I live at 66 Glen Street. Well, I wasn't going to touch on the subject, but let me just elaborate a little bit on the transfer of that Booth House on Lower Avenue. There was nothing stopping the owner for transferring the property themselves to this organization for a dog. By, and preserving the money owed of it would have been protected and still owed to the city. And the city getting involved, as I'll say, circumventing the system to avoid and elude paying the taxes on the property to transfer the property, it just doesn't make any sense. Well, anyway, I'm here to discuss, you know, environmental educator, a position that was created under an administration that was corrupt. And some of that corruption still exists today. This position was allegedly financed through grants. And not one of the grants had covered the salary of these physicians over the years, and the city has picked up the dime. Also, the city, no matter how you're going to disguise this position and call it whatever you want to call it, program operation specialist, or anything that hides the official foundation of that job as an environmental educator, I told you once before, educator does not belong in the city municipality budget. It belongs in the school system budget. We're paying someone to go around to school to teach children environmental education. As far as the press is concerned, they don't pick up on these things because they don't want to. That some infinite way, there must be some intertwined invisible hand that they seem to want to protect. And I urge you not to vote on the resolution for this position. And I know you will vote on this here, because you do rubber stamp everything that comes down the tubes, and I'm a witness to it. And as far as transparency is concerned, that this administration, okay, has gone into more executive sessions in the past three months than any administration has done in the past decade. And there must be something that they don't want you to see. And I will be back next month. Oh, and as far as the advice Coward Council was given to the council last night at the meeting, it appeared that they were lobbying for you to do this. But you have the, it was the same thing, hurry, let's get this done, because the building's going to fall down. You don't even want to wait three days to find out who the principals were, what their plan is, or anything. Get it done. Got to do it right away. It was the same thing with the Ray's case. You got to do it to beat the judge's decision, because the judge's decision's going to come down, and we're not going to owe him anything. Or we're going to owe him something. But you didn't wait for it. You made a political issue out of it, and it was a civic issue. And I'll be here next month to speak again. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Joe Leoni.
I live in Tilson. I'm not a City of Kingston resident, but I am the president of the Ulster County Federation of the Sportsman Club, Ulster County, which is 36 organizations with over 5,000 members, and hundreds of those members live in the city of Kingston, and I'm speaking on behalf of them. I have their permission. When I say sportsmen, it's a generic term. Most of our organizations were formed in the 1930s, all the way back to the late 1800s. We have three, several organizations. Ulster County Pistol League is chaired by a woman. Three of our gun clubs, the presidents are women. So 20,000, over 20,000 licensed handgun permit holders in Ulster County have legal permits to carry 40% of those are women. They're driving all around to surrounding counties. There's indoor ranges in Albany, Columbia, Green, Duchess, and Orange Counties. There's nothing in Ulster County outside outdoor ranges. So they're looking for this. They're going, traveling elsewhere to spend their money. One of our organizations is Women Unafraid. They teach legal and non-legal defense means to women. They use the karate building once in a while on Broadway. And one of our organizations, one of our clubs also has Women on Target program, which is dedicated to women after they get their pistol permits. It's a grueling eight hours of in-class and on-hands-on training with firearms. You get a pistol permit in Ulster County, it takes six months to a year to get it, has to be reviewed by the sheriff's office, background checks are done, and then it has to be, the final review is done by one of the eight judges in Ulster County. It's definitely a process. This is a private investment that Dr. Sawyer is bringing too. No grants involved, no payments and lieu of taxes, private investment, grants. Soon as the grant money's used up, it seems like your jobs go away or your business goes away. He's here to stay. He owns other properties in the city of Kingston, and he's well worth in this. Sales tax revenue. I had a dentist appointment this morning at Town Ulster. Right after the appointment, I had lunch, I had breakfast up in Kingston. I had a meeting in uptown Kingston this afternoon. I had lunch up there. So wherever I go, I'm spending my money in the city of Kingston. When I'm in Midtown, I go to one of my favorite places, which happens to be Dallas Hot Jitters. And that's right around the corner from this proposed building. So people are going to come in here. A lot of the revenue that's generated by sportsmen and gun owners, there's a show at the Qualians this weekend, right there by All-American Ford. There'll be thousands of people coming there. They're going to spill into the city of Kingston, they're going to be eating in diners, even restaurants, they're going to be shopping, they're going to be spending money. All the sports-related money in sales, goes into sales, it's not only sales tax, it's also Pittman Robinson funds. All this money goes through the Fish and Wildlife, there's a federal excise tax on all this equipment. It goes to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, which comes back to the states, and EPA money. So all these, all these projects that you have going around the city of Kingston that are granted by the EPA came out of our money that we spent. You know, it's a positive thing in the city of Kingston. For some reason, it made it on the front page of the paper, and it's a big ordeal and a big issue. The issues that should be on the front page of the paper are like the Grand Slam Bar two blocks away from this, that always has some violence going on. The city police, just a week ago, had to go there to break up fights. I know that gives the city of Kingston a black eye, and they don't want to have that right on the papers, but that's, that's what needs to be addressed, not picking on this range that's going to bring business here. So to base this thing on a 1978 law that says no firing in the city of Kingston, the range in the Murphy Building was still open when that law went into effect. Let's look at the old 265, New York State statue. Let's include all the exemptions in there, not take out two lines. We didn't fight this law when it came about, because there is already a law in the books. You can't fire a firearm within 500 feet of a residence without permission from the owner. So it was a redundant law to start with. Let's not base it on this. Let's review the 78 law, let's change it, let's go into, we'll bring to information from other cities that are in worse condition and have ranges in there, but truly the positive outlooks in those, in those communities. I thank the board for letting me speak today. Thank you.
That concludes the people have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? City of Kingston, I have the last spoken speaker, who is going to be in votes. We will now adjourn to the plane and communications. There is no discussion, I'm going to file at the courts office. We will begin a motion defense with the Secretary of the General Bill.